Welcome to an informational meeting of the House Finance Committee. We have two bills to discuss today. I'd like to start by having Lori Smith, our senior committee legislative assistant, call the roll.
Chairman Samuelson?
Here.
Rep Abney?
On leave.
So Peter Freytez?
Present online.
Fleming?
Justin Fleming? On leave.
Gallagher?
Gungauer? On leave.
Harris?
On leave.
Inglis?
Present online.
Kuduski?
Rab? On leave.
Scott?
On leave.
Venkat?
Waxman? Present online.
Webster? Chairman Greiner?
Here.
DeVanzo?
On leave.
Fritz?
On leave.
Gatos? Jones?
On leave.
Jones, we might, present online. I think I see Jones online.
Yes, online.
Kepphart?
Um, on leave.
Mako?
Here.
Rossi?
Present.
Rin Kavitch?
On leave.
Stanbuck?
Here.
Stender?
On leave.
Thank you. And as the meeting goes on, we will have many members joining us from other places. I think there are eight different meetings going on at the present time all over the Capitol. So some of our members will join us after they're finished at their other meeting. Well, we have two bills to discuss. I'd like to start by discussing House Bill 1900. And we have the prime sponsor of House Bill 1900, Representative Nikki Rivera with us today. And she's going to introduce the bill, and then we have testimony. And I want to say that we did have a similar bill in the previous session. We had a bill sponsored by Representative Ed Nielsen that we discussed in this committee and voted on. And I know Representative Nielsen is the number-two sponsor on this bill. So I'd like to recognize Representative Rivera on House Bill 1900.
Good morning, Chairman. Thank you very much, and good morning to the entire committee. It's a pleasure to be here with you today and also with another person with us, Nelson Suarez from TeachPlus. We want to talk to you this morning about House Bill 1900. And it's a proposal to bring to Pennsylvania a tax credit for teachers who spend money on their own classrooms. It's inevitable that a lot of us spend money on our classrooms, and I say "our" because I just left a 30-year teaching career, teaching high school Spanish. And so to spend money on your students is something that a lot of teachers find themselves doing. We do reward this at the federal level. The IRS has a tax deduction for this for teachers, but at the state level, we don't. So as we know, our PA teachers share a passion for learning. They inspire, they motivate, they create positive learning environments and healthy academic habits. They also encourage critical thinking. Along with that comes the innate desire to make sure your kids have everything they need to make all of those things happen. Some stats that I have with me today are that from my e-learning world, on average in the 24-25 school year, the national average was $979 that a teacher would spend on their classroom. Consider that in Pennsylvania, the starting salary is around $53,000 before taxes. And then to spend that amount of money on your classroom, here in, wait, I'm sorry, the national average was $895, but in the school year for 24-25, it was $979 here in Pennsylvania. Oftentimes, our teachers are spending, teachers are spending more money when they're working in low-income household areas and where the facilities are not up to par. And it's not just regular classroom materials. It comes with fans because there's no air conditioning. It's all sorts of things that make the environment a little more comfortable for kids while we're trying to teach them. So to keep all of that into consideration and to be mindful that the federal level offers the deduction, we are here to propose that we have a teacher credit, which is more of a benefit than a deduction when it comes to rewarding our teachers for what they're doing. House Bill 1900 would supplement the federal level. It would provide a $100 tax credit to teachers who spend their own money on classroom supplies and equipment. And these tax credits would be beneficial to our teachers. In the 24-25 school year, we have about 125,592 teachers that may qualify for that tax credit under House Bill 1900. And our teachers give so much to our students, and they shouldn't go into financial debt for it. And while we are, you know, working to reach equitable funding for our schools, helping our teachers along the way in this, at the state level, would be appreciated, I'm sure, by our educators. Thank you, Chairman Samuelson, for allowing me to speak today.
Thank you. Appreciate what you said. We'll have questions at the end. I do want to mention the federal one is a tax deduction, $300 you can deduct. For many teachers in the 22% tax bracket, they save $66. Some teachers are in the 12% tax bracket, they might save $36. With our tax rate at 3.07, if we went with the deduction, it would be about $9.21. So having a $100 tax credit would get money directly into the hands of our teachers when they fill out their Pennsylvania taxes the following year. So I like the way that you structured that with a tax credit. I want to call on Nelson Suarez, who is a teacher and also part of TeachPlus, the Pennsylvania Policy Senior Fellow from TeachPlus, and a recently retired teacher from the Mannheim Township and Lancaster School Districts. Mr. Suarez.
Chairman Samuelson, Chairman Greiner, and honorable members of the committee. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today. My name is Nelson Suarez, and I am a recently retired teacher from Mannheim Township School District in Lancaster County. In addition, I am a 2025-2026 TeachPlus Pennsylvania Policy Senior Fellow. TeachPlus is an organization whose mission is to empower excellent, experienced, and diverse teachers to take leadership over key policy and practice issues that advance equity, opportunity, and student success. As I mentioned, I recently retired after more than 20 years of teaching in the Mannheim Township School District and School District of Lancaster. And much has changed in our profession since I began my year, my career, excuse me, all those years ago. Yet for all that has changed, there's a reality that continues. Teachers continue to spend their own money to prepare for the school year. We invest our personal finances to make our students' learning experience the best that they can be. And throughout my career, I have consistently reached the IRS cap for the educator expenses deduction each year. Most of these costs were for classroom library books, decorations, and bulletin board materials. In recent years, the list expanded to include snacks for students and classroom rewards or incentives. A state tax credit for these expenses would be meaningful support for teachers. House Bill 1900 proposes a $100 tax credit for teachers. While $100 does not fully offset the rising cost of classroom materials, it represents a significant gesture of support, especially for new teachers at the lower end of the pay scale and for those working in urban or economically disadvantaged districts. Even in an affluent school district like Mannheim Township, I regularly incurred out-of-pocket expenses that brought me to the IRS limit each year. And as teachers, we rely on data to inform our instruction and guide our decision-making. I'm sure that you too rely on data to shape your policies and priority. So in preparation for today's testimony, I surveyed a group of TeachPlus fellows representing urban, suburban, and rural districts, as well as charter schools across the Commonwealth. And I asked them, approximately, how much do you spend out-of-pocket on classroom or work-related supplies in a typical school year? Their responses were as follows: 12% spent between $0 and $99; 21% spent between $100 and $249; 25% spent between $250 and $499; 21% spent between $500 and $749; and 21% spent between $750 and greater. So that comes up to 88% of the fellow surveyed spent more than $100 in a particular year. While these numbers are staggering, they are not surprising. The categories where teachers spent the most were snacks and food for students and student incentives and rewards, followed by decorations, library books, and basic supplies like pencils and paper. The incentives are reward categories most likely related to the implementation of the Positive Behavior Intervention and Support, or PBIS, throughout many districts in the Commonwealth. As I reflect on my early years in the classroom, I would have greatly appreciated $100 even to continue building my classroom library, a place where students could fall in love with reading and where a warm, engaging environment could support both teaching and learning. Even in my later years at Mannheim Township, I typically spent about $300 out-of-pocket annually. New teachers, we know, graduate with significant student loan debt, only tend to a profession where starting salaries are not enough to cover rent, transportation, groceries, and classroom needs. Despite these challenges, they remain dedicated to their students. We must find every possible way to incentivize and support these educators to show them that we value their work and we are committed to sustaining the teaching profession. House Bill 1900 is a good start. While modest in dollar amount, it sends a powerful message that Pennsylvania values its teachers. While we have made great strides, much more needs to be done to strengthen and sustain our educator workforce. Thank you again for the opportunity to testify today. I hope my remarks have provided a glimpse into the financial realities facing teachers across our Commonwealth. I look forward to working with you to advance this and other initiatives that support our educators and ensure that Pennsylvania becomes a model for what education can and should be for both our teachers and above all, our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Suarez. Thank you, Representative Rivera. I do want to open it up for questions. I will note that Representative Inglis is here in person. And I do also want to say that we did get a fiscal note from the Pennsylvania Department of Revenue about this bill. They estimated that there are 125,592 teachers who could potentially take advantage of this, which makes the fiscal cost of this legislation about $12.5 million. I know the bill is worded that if you have at least $100 of out-of-pocket expenses, your tax credit would be $100. If you have less than that, let's say you have $57, your tax credit would be $57. So I do want to open it up to questions from any of the committee members. Chair Greiner? Representative Rossi?
I just had some questions for you. If old practices are still in play, where teachers are sending out a note where you can donate a book, so when my kids went to school, our school sent out a list, a wish list, for every teacher. And if there was a birth in the family, a death in the family, somebody you wanted to remember, you would get a sticker in that book. By the end of the year, every single wish list was filled, just from the community, from, are teachers going that length, or are we in a society where everybody just has to buy everything they want right now? Because I think in the old-fashioned times, teachers, I had eight kids, and so my kids went to public school, private school, Catholic school. I had kids all over the place. And so every school did it differently. But I would get a list where it said, we need pencils, we need pens, we need Kleenexes, we need cough drops. And, you know, that was something I would tell my kids, well, with your chore money, I expect you to donate to this, you're a part of this, you need to contribute. So I just wonder, did you see these practices, or are we getting these lists? And my daughter's a teacher, and she shares bulletin board supplies with other teachers. Like if she buys a pack of something, she goes down to the other classrooms and says, can anybody use this, it's extra? And people give her stuff, too. So I find that teachers work really well together, that I don't know that I'm comfortable growing government to give you $100 because there are so many teachers and there are so many needs, when these old practices, I think, really worked well. And I felt a part of it. I felt connected when I donated something. I felt that my kids watched us as a family give to that, and they cared more about it.
I agree. I think as teachers, we're very resourceful, and there is a lot of sharing. And within school districts, there is a centralized, oftentimes, a centralized location for supplies and needed things. When those things run out, and when families who are strapped for money can't contribute, I think this is where this comes in. I don't think that this is a, I don't see teachers trying to spend money out of their pocket in order to get back, what is it, $9, $12, $15 from the federal government. It's a last resort. So I wouldn't look at this as a freebie giveaway for teachers. It's a reward for giving probably much more than the state is going to give back. But I do find that our teachers in our districts are very resourceful with what they have. Mr. Nelson, do you have anything to add?
I would agree. I just happen to have been blessed to have worked in an affluent school district. And as Representative Rivera mentioned, in Lancaster County, a lot of the school districts pool to go ahead and purchase certain things. However, that is not always the case throughout the Commonwealth, where you have districts that are underfunded and are in desperate need for going ahead and obtaining basic supplies and so forth. And that's why I decided to survey a lot of the fellows, because we come from different parts of the Commonwealth. We come from different types of settings, where we have urban, suburban, and we have rural. So, and each of them shared that a lot of the times that they were spending a lot of money, in particular, for things just like basic supplies.
Well, I just want to comment as well, that I think that the schools are giving, being given a lot of taxpayer dollars, and perhaps their budgets aren't where they're giving you what you're asking for. Are you going back to the district and asking, hey, we need, as a group of teachers, are you having asks that they're not complying with, that you need all these extra things?
There are items in the budget, just like in our state budget, where you can't go beyond them. When it's not there, it's not there. So the district allocates annual needed materials, and that's it. I know some of the other initiatives, that, one of the initiatives that I had started at the school where I taught, was at locker cleanout time at the end of the school year, a donation of everything that would normally hit the trash can to put it on a pile to be reused the following year, for students to utilize used materials, not even new materials. So we're talking $100 at the end of the rope, when we've got communities whose parents can't part with five bucks to send boxes of tissues to schools. So it's the teacher who's going to take that on versus all of the red tape to try to get five bucks somewhere to get a box of tissues. So I really think this is just the end of the line, when your school says, we aren't reimbursing you for that. You can't be reimbursed for, I know I've gone to my district at times and said, I needed to buy this, thank you, but we can't reimburse you for that.
But are you telling me the schools are actually not giving you Kleenexes when you need them?
When we run out of them, that's the issue.
Well, that's a problem.
Yes, it is. Agreed.
Back to the books. Are these books that you need for learning, or are they just extra books for, like, library essentials?
They're for classroom libraries.
Okay.
And just as you mentioned, once again, I benefited from being in an affluent school district where we had organizations and parents who would go ahead and donate, and they had those wish lists. But that isn't the case for every school district.
Do the children all have libraries they can go down to and get books that have been accumulated through the years? And can the classroom not sign certain books out where they're in the classroom per month, and then you switch them up?
They can, but there are school districts in the Commonwealth that don't even have libraries.
Do you know how many?
I'm sorry, I would love to go and get back to you, but I would get that number to you.
That would be a big concern to me, because libraries are essential. And if we have school districts that actually don't have them, I would want to know that, and I would be questioning that up and down. And we should be doing drives to get books, because that's not a hard ask. And I don't think that has to come out of the teacher's income. I think that's something that communities, like when families have children, they have tons of books that, I just went to a baby shower, and everybody bought a book, and there were 100 people there, they had 100 books. That child isn't going to stay little forever. Those families, when they clean out, could donate to libraries and such in communities. I think we should have drives. If you're having schools that don't have libraries and you don't have books, that's something we can easily work on without coming out of the teacher's pay and then asking the government to come up with money to give back to teachers. If you have certain book requests, again, I think donation drives can be done. Okay? Thank you for your answers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have a question from Representative Inglis.
Thank you, Chair. Just more comments rather than questions. I'd like to thank the sponsor of the bill. Similar to Rep Rivera, I'm a recent former educator and still active member of the AFT. And I can personally attest to the figures that you were citing there in terms of how much money comes out of the average teacher's pocket to make sure that their children are having the best experience and the best opportunities to learn. I don't think that we should be relying on the generosity of families to be donating to our schools. We have, I mean, that's why we use tax dollars in our schools. And every school, regardless of their status, should be providing the best education possible to the children. So I'd just like to thank the sponsor again, and I look forward to casting a vote in support of our teachers across the Commonwealth. Thank you.
And Representative Stanbuck?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, everybody, for your comments. We were just looking here online, and our AI-generated information tells us that Pennsylvania, in Pennsylvania, every school is required to have a library, although that may not be the case. So I guess that's information we do need to track down. I'll say this much, this is certainly not a new issue. I mean, my mother, 50, 60 years ago, when she was teaching, used to buy a lot of supplies for her classroom. I remember helping her put all this stuff up on the bulletin boards and get the books and that kind of thing for her classroom. So I know this is going on. I'm usually very skeptical about tax credits. I'm a little bit more open to this one, because I think there's a need for it. I don't think the cost is really all that great. And I really question really how many teachers are actually going to apply for the tax credit at the end of the day. I think they see that donation of classroom supplies as really part of their job, the cost of, you know, having a teaching job in Pennsylvania. So anyway, that's just my thoughts. I don't think this is a new problem. It may have grown just because of the cost of materials. And I certainly realize, probably in some of our cash-strapped school districts, it's a bigger burden than it is in our more affluent districts. So anyway, that's just my thoughts.
Thank you. And I know the federal tax credit's been around for 23 years. We just looked it up. It was started under the administration of George W. Bush. I just want to say that if teachers are spending $900 out-of-pocket, and they can get that federal tax deduction, which might amount to $66 if they're in the 22% tax bracket, $100 from Pennsylvania, I think, would be a powerful statement that we could make, that we value our teachers. I know many teachers in my community, I know they all try to collect as many books as they can from many sources. We have a wonderful resource in the Lehigh Valley called Cops and Kids. It's distributed 1.1 million books to kids all over. Nationally, Dolly Parton has distributed 100 million books. And so I know teachers are very resourceful, but oftentimes, teachers are always paying for something out of their pocket, and over the course of the year, it adds up to $900. I do like the way that Mr. Suarez commented at the end of his testimony, while this $100 would be modest in dollar amount, it sends a powerful message that Pennsylvania values its teachers. We do have other tax credits. We discussed some in our committee for investment, for jobs. We have, you know, $50 million for milk processing. We have money for hydrogen, for nuclear. So I think this would be a powerful statement that we could move forward. And my intention is to bring this bill up, we have a meeting scheduled on Tuesday, October 28th. And my intention at this time is to bring it up that day. So we would have three weeks to come up with amendments, and the amendment deadline would be 1 o'clock the day before October 27th. If there's no other questions, please feel free to reach out to me, or Representative Greiner, or Representative Rivera in the next three weeks to talk about ways we can further take a look at this legislation. Thank you. Thank you for being with us today.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next bill is House Bill 1556, which is sponsored by Representative Fiedler. And we have Representative Fiedler with us today, and also three individuals who are going to testify. And the bill is in your packet, along with most of the testimony. Let me start with Representative Elizabeth Fiedler.
Thank you. Good morning. Thank you, Chairman Samuelson, Chairman Greiner, and members of the House Finance Committee for having me here today to discuss House Bill 1566, the Advanced Clean Manufacturing Tax Credit. For generations, our Commonwealth has powered America's progress, from the steel mills of Pittsburgh and Bethlehem to the advanced materials labs of today. As lawmakers, I believe, we're charged with building upon that legacy. That's what this bill seeks to do. We all know global competition, tariffs, automation, and a variety of supply chain disruptions have the potential to threaten our manufacturing abilities. According to the Pennsylvania Steel Alliance, primary metal manufacturing makes up 60% of our state's economic output. But we also know that industry is changing, as manufacturers are looking to create products that are more durable, lighter, energy-efficient, and environmentally friendly. Clean steel, for example, is expected to equal 35% of crude, of current crude steel production by 2050. This legislation you are considering today will support existing Pennsylvania businesses in their efforts to adapt to new technologies, and it will help to attract new businesses and new jobs to the Commonwealth. And because few states utilize production tax credits like this one, Pennsylvania could both secure its competitive advantage in upstream manufacturing and help Pennsylvania businesses capture the emerging market for these next-generation materials like clean steel, clean aluminum, and clean cement. I look forward to today's testimony. I thank the committee for your time on this issue and hope we can achieve bipartisan support for this critical manufacturing legislation. We all want to see Pennsylvania industry thrive, and I look forward to working with you to that aim. Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And for the committee members, I think what I'd like to do is have all the testimony received, and then have a time for committee questions.
I forgot to mention, I'd like to thank my partners in this legislation, two members of your committee, Representative Inglis and Representative Kuduski. Thank you.
So let's go to, I have Hannah Thonet, did I pronounce that right?
Thonay.
Thonet. And from manager of state industry policy for RMI, the Rocky Mountain Institute. So thank you very much for being here. Look forward to your testimony.
Thank you, Chair Samuelson. Chair, can you all hear me a little closer? Is this better? I'm a little shorter than the last speaker. Chair Samuelson, Chair Greiner, members of the Finance Committee, thank you for the opportunity to testify on HB 1556, the Advanced Manufacturing Tax Credit. My name is Hannah Thonay. I'm a manager at RMI focusing on state clean industrial policy. RMI, which is founded under the name Rocky Mountain Institute, is an independent, nonpartisan nonprofit that transforms global energy systems through market-driven solutions. We have been invited to testify as techno-economic experts to discuss the mechanism by which tax credits, like those offered in HB 1556, can both boost clean energy investment and spur local and regional economic growth, as well as encourage cleaner production methods in existing industries. In this testimony, I will walk through the role of public support to catalyze private sector investments, explain how we expect the proposed bill to impact Pennsylvania, and provide recommendations to ensure highest and best use of the tax credit. HB 1556 can position Pennsylvania to crowd in private capital for advanced energy and industrial equipment manufacturing and capture the related benefits of economic growth. Supporting technologies like clean commodities, grid equipment, and heat pumps can do two things: build a comparative advantage in Pennsylvania in fast-growing markets, and leverage today's workforce to modernize existing facilities. Further, the competitive design of the tax credit, combined with performance metrics and clawback mechanisms, can provide appropriate guardrails to ensure taxpayer dollars are supporting optimal investments. There is a clear role for targeted public dollars to de-risk innovative clean energy technologies to both compete in global markets and unlock additional investment in local communities. Since the Inflation Reduction Act, Clean Investment Monitor reports that quarterly private clean tech manufacturing investment rose about 300% from $2.7 billion in Q2 of 2022 to $11.1 billion in Q2 of 2025, spurred by the passage of the Federal Advanced Manufacturing Production Credit, also known as 45X. Similarly, the U.S. Department of Energy received over 800 concept papers requesting over $40 billion in tax credits, more than six times the $6 billion in funding available for its qualifying Advanced Energy Project Credit Program, or 48C. Pennsylvania's own $396 million RISE PA program expects to commit all of its funding for medium- and large-scale projects in its first round of applications. medium- and large-scale projects in its first round of applications, signaling strong in-state demand. The next era of advanced manufacturing growth will be shaped by state-level leadership. States that move decisively will capture manufacturing supply chains, technology startups, and workforce pipelines. In doing so, Pennsylvania's industries will be competitive in global markets and encourage innovation paired with new investment. The Commonwealth can build upon the momentum established by RISE PA to ensure that manufacturing and clean tech facilities continue to invest in Pennsylvania after those program funds are expended. HB 1556 allows for $50 million to be given in credits per year with a $25 million cap per project. As a reference point, Prisman, an advanced conductor manufacturer in Williamsport, received $3.8 million in federal funds to double its production capacity and invested $22.5 million in private capital, retaining 400 jobs and creating 27 new jobs. The project also received $3 million in loans from the Pennsylvania Industrial Development Authority. Siemens Energy in North Carolina received $18 million in federal funding to build a large power transformer factory, which helped spur $150 million in private investment and 560 local jobs. These projects, as examples, leverage six to eight times the private investment for each public dollar spent. While the $50 million annual credit is significant, it is a catalyst, not a cure-all. For example, converting a coal-based blast furnace steel facility into a hydrogen direct-reduced iron plant could require $500 million, far beyond the $25 million cap. The proposed credit in HB 1556 is not expected to close that cost gap unless it is stacked with other resources. But where the Advanced Manufacturing Tax Credit could have powerful leverage is with equipment manufacturers, secondary steel producers, and clean technology startups that can demonstrate lower emission production, validate business models, and attract private follow-on capital. RMI analyzed Pennsylvania's clean tech sector competitiveness using the Clean Growth Tool, co-developed with the Brookings Institute. The tool shows that Pennsylvania has significant strengths in the energy transmission equipment, low-carbon iron and steel, and heat pump industries. 10 counties in Pennsylvania ranked in the top fifth percentile nationally for feasibility in all three industries, meaning the state has some of the readiest workforce to supply the labor needs of the industries HB 1556 aims to support. In addition, the Advanced Manufacturing Tax Credit is designed to encourage investments in demand-growth sectors where Pennsylvania has existing expertise. For example, in their review of 28 distinct demand forecasts, authors of the National Institute for Environmental Studies found that global demand for green steel is forecast to equal 35% of crude steel production by 2050, as Chair Fiedler also mentioned. Similarly, given rising electricity load growth projections, Bloomberg New Energy Finance suggests grid investment will reach $483 billion by 2030, 58% above the average investment seen between 2020 and 2024. We expect this tax credit could help the Commonwealth to build a comparative advantage in these growing markets, expand production, and invite new market entrants. The bill is also expected to reduce pollution as facilities shift to lower-emitting production methods. According to EPA's Co-Benefits Risk Assessment Tool, Pennsylvania's iron and steel facilities impose roughly $15.7 million in lost economic activity and between 0.9 and 1.6 billion in total health costs each year. Further, analysis based on the Energy Policy Simulator, an open-source model for estimating the impacts of energy policies, indicates that industrial emissions from manufacturing in Pennsylvania have the potential to be reduced over 60%, but these declines are unlikely to be realized under business-as-usual conditions. To reiterate, the bill is designed as an economic development and job-growth bill that rewards innovations in clean tech manufacturing, as well as investments to produce clean commodities, and is expected to result in a combination of new jobs, cleaner air, and reduced greenhouse gas emissions. Some minor changes to existing language could clarify and ensure that the tax credit is used for highest and best-use cases. A full list of comments is included in our written testimony, but I will highlight two priority opportunities for consideration now. First, the bill would benefit from adding a requirement that renewable electricity investments must qualify through power purchase agreements or onsite generation that ensure additionality and deliverability. In other words, those which add clean electrons to the grid where they are needed to support Pennsylvania manufacturing to avoid the risk of subsidizing pre-existing renewable generation. However, we would also suggest clarifying in the definition of clean steel, aluminum, cement, and glass how much renewable energy is needed to qualify as it is currently unspecified. 100% renewable energy may be misaligned with today's market capabilities and the goal of the bill, given the significant draws of power required for existing facilities. Similarly, for new electrified technologies exploring novel methods of iron and steel production in particular, enforcing 100% renewable energy procurement for their pilot and demo-scale systems could deter them from leveraging the subsidy and citing within the Commonwealth. Consider setting a certain minimum clean electricity threshold to be ratcheted up over time. Subsidizing the incremental procurement of clean electricity could result in meaningful emissions reductions while also supporting these novel innovations. Second, consider adjusting the definition of clean steel and expanding the bill scope to include one of steel's most critical materials, iron. On the first point, as written, the definition of clean steel may inadvertently subsidize coal-based steel production, thwarting the intent of the bill and also disincentivizing future iron-making innovations. On the second point, iron production is the most energy and emissions-intensive material within the steel supply chain, and while iron is often produced in integrated facilities inseparable from steel manufacturing, there are many iron production methods that do not require co-located steelmaking. Ensuring these types of facilities, standalone iron producers, can qualify is essential for keeping Pennsylvania on the industry's cutting edge. In conclusion, HB 1556 offers a pragmatic, forward-looking approach to industrial policy. The bill's incentives are expected to attract innovative manufacturers, create skilled jobs, and demonstrate that economic growth and emissions reduction can go hand-in-hand. On behalf of RMI, I thank you for the opportunity to testify today. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. And we'll have questions in a few minutes after we get the other two testifiers. Next, I'd like to call up, thank you, Hannah Thonay, and please stay at the table. I'd like to call up Joshua Ash, who is Director of Environmental Law and Policy. Clinic and Assistant, he's a clinic and assistant clinical professor at University of Pittsburgh School of Law. And I thank Joshua Ash for joining us today. Look forward to your testimony.
Hi, everyone. Thank you, members of the committee. It's a pleasure to be here. And also, first, a friend, this, as you probably can tell, this topic can get a little dense, so I think all of us could talk about this a very long time or a very short amount of time. So let me know.
Or in the next 47 minutes before our session starts.
So I'll err on the side of keeping this short, but I really encourage everyone on the committee to take advantage of this as an opportunity to ask questions for some folks who live in the weeds of this. So I'll keep it really high level, but happy to engage in that. So first thing, really quickly, I wanted to just let you all know what I, my stake in this and where I'm coming from. It might help with understanding my perspective. So prior to coming to the University of Pittsburgh, I worked at Georgetown Law Center, at a center that worked with states to put together anything and everything, clean energy, climate policy, but one of the things that we did was help states put together their CPRG, Climate Pollution Reduction Grant, plans, including Pennsylvania. And if you don't know, Pennsylvania was a big winner of that program. That's where the RISE money came from. And one of my roles there was the cement and concrete guy in helping to really help states look at their situation and think, what really makes sense for my state? And what policies can I throw out that don't make sense for us? And what states do we really, what policies do we really need to be thinking to kickstart something good that pleases everybody in the state? So that's the space that I live and breathe in, is looking at a state, thinking what makes sense for them. And then just bear in mind, there's a couple of different materials in this bill. I know the most about cement, but I kind of sort of know a little bit about the other ones. So with that being said, I recently moved to the University of Pittsburgh and have been living and breathing Pennsylvania specifically, and I'm super excited by this bill. I think it makes a lot of sense for about a million reasons, but I'll kind of prove my point here in three ways. So the first of which, trying to apply to all the materials in this bill, I wanted to give you a background on just why we do clean manufacturing policy. Secondly, the previous speaker spoke to how production tax credits work a bit, but I wanted to lean into how that works for one of the industries I know the most about, which is cement, and kind of give you a real feel for what that looks like here. And then I'll leave it for questions. So my really quick shtick on clean manufacturing policy is, and the biggest criticism I hear of this is, why would we throw money at something that's not sustainable in the long term? And I think that's a really bad misconception of what clean manufacturing policy is. I like to paint it more as, essentially, as a policymaker, what you're doing is promoting innovation, which is great for everybody. It's great for, no matter what your stance is, it's good for the economy, jobs, et cetera. But innovation doesn't just happen automatically. You need to reward the people that are doing something interesting and innovative and cool for the economy, and think about ways to do that that's fair and economical. So in one analogy that I use quite frequently, maybe just because I like to garden, is thinking about this type of policy as a trellis that a tomato or a green bean grows on, but without it, sure, things are going to happen and grow, but you can really foster a successful environment if you just prop certain things that you want to happen, happen. The second sort of really high-level thing I want you to know about clean manufacturing policy is, most often, these are actually catalyzing something that's going to be a self-sustaining aspect of the economy. So you're not giving a manufacturer money that they're going to need to succeed into the future. What you're really doing is bridging together supply and demand. So in the case of cement, you have these innovative new technologies that just are there, people know how to do them, but suppliers aren't supplying them because nobody's demanding it, and then consumers don't have anywhere to buy it because nobody's making it. As a policymaker, you need to figure out how you bring that together, and essentially, you're the keystone that keeps the arch from falling apart. Because a cute analogy I use all the time for Pennsylvania is being the Keystone State. And what this is really doing is getting these producers that are trying to do these green, innovative, clean things over that hump of supply and demand mismatch. And from that, you know, there's a lot of exciting opportunity. So the last thing I'll say, just to kind of give you a concrete example, is, no pun intended, is to get into what this would look like for cement. And again, this bill is about cement, aluminum, glass, and, I think I was forgetting, and steel, sorry, steel. So anyway, one of the things you'll know about industrial policies, every sector is so different, and the opportunities and challenges within that are so different. For cement, it's pretty exciting that there's a lot of cement players out there that are ready and want to innovate, and they have technologies that they've tested, they're pretty far along in the R&amp;D process, they really want to do it. And you go to these conferences and hear these scientists and engineers talk about all these exciting projects. Inevitably, if you're a policy person in the room, they'll corner you at a cocktail party and say, we need policy before we can act on this. And that's, you know, if you're a state like Pennsylvania that's serious about industrial policy, you need to listen up to those conversations and say, okay, how do I step to that? I want this to happen in our state. Secondly, and this actually is the last point I'll make here, is when you do something like this for cement, you actually touch so many players across the economy. The way that cement works specifically is you have, you know, about a half a dozen major cement players in this state, huge, big, heavy-emitting facilities, but then you have hundreds, if not thousands, of concrete producers, you have hundreds of thousands of haulers associated with that, you have quarries, you have contractors, you have general, you have design-build entities. All these people have a role to play in tracking that value add of doing something greener. And there's also a lot of jobs that happen there. I forgot to mention, but my first job was actually a project attorney for the first, for the largest at the time, P3 in Pennsylvania. So I know a lot about the construction industry too, and I can attest that there's a lot of jobs with doing things slightly better. So it would be a huge win for the cement-concrete building industry, I think, and I'm sure there's others on here that could speak to the positive impacts for the aluminum, steel, and glass industries as well. So happy to answer questions, but that's my, well, I think we're doing questions at the end, I think.
And thank you, Joshua Ash, for your testimony. We have one more testifier, then we'll have questions. Okay. Sorry about that. I have one more testifier, which I, okay. Well, Hillary, Hillary Lewis is online, Steel Director for Industrious Labs. I will call on Hillary Lewis, and then we'll take questions from the committee.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Samuelson, Chair Griner, and members of the Finance Committee for the opportunity to speak today in support of House Bill 1556, the Advanced Clean Manufacturing Tax Credit. My name is Hillary Lewis, and I am the Steel Director at Industrious Labs, a climate advocacy organization focused on industrial transformation. Clean manufacturing is the future, and with the support of legislation like HB 1556, Pennsylvania is setting itself up to lead the way. Nationally, industrial emissions account for roughly a quarter of climate pollution. In Pennsylvania, the share is even higher, almost a third of emissions. This climate pollution comes alongside health-harming pollution. In Pennsylvania, coal-based steelmaking at the Mon Valley Works in Menneson Coke is responsible for up to an estimated $1.4 billion in annual healthcare costs and $16 million in lost economic activity. This analysis comes from modeling conducted by Industrious Labs using industry-reported data. However, industry also provides for Pennsylvania families, supporting over half a million jobs. What I want to convey to you today is that a clean manufacturing tax credit is the right tool for the job at hand, protecting family-sustaining jobs while reducing climate and health-harming pollution. HB 1556 is a prime example of how states and commonwealths can lead in the race to clean manufacturing and win economic development for local communities. Putting forward this legislation now acknowledges the important truth that clean manufacturing is a race, and states have the tools to ensure that they stay competitive. While there are few examples at the state level of such programs, we know that incentives work in attracting manufacturing investments. At the national level, the U.S. Department of Energy's Office of Clean Energy Demonstrations Industrial Demonstration Program successfully attracted billions in private investment for projects ranging from new formulations for cement to green iron made without fossil fuels. These investments promise hundreds of direct jobs, often with union contracts and meaningful health advantages compared to conventional manufacturing methods. In that same vein, Pennsylvania's program can also succeed in attracting and supporting innovative projects and jobs and health benefits that come with them. I do want to note one significant difference between the proposed bill and the Energy Department program, and that's scale. Of course, the federal government has significantly more resources, and that should not dissuade the state legislature from supporting HB 1556. However, with a goal in mind of attracting a project as big as a new clean iron and steel facility, it is worth noting that the Energy Department awardees that advanced clean iron and steel were under award for $500 million. A global study by Industrious Labs of state-sponsored incentives for clean iron and steel found that even that level of funding was roughly 35% less than similar programs in other countries. This shows both that smaller programs can be effective and that global leaders are pouring even more resources into attracting and reinvesting in domestic manufacturing. A potentially more similar program, called the Industrial Decarbonization and Improvement of Grid Operations Program, or INDOGO, in California, deployed $68 million and attracted projects that improved energy efficiency and piloted thermal batteries. I would mention here that at HB 1556's current scale, it may be worth considering opening the program to industrial heat, which accounts for about half of industrial emissions nationally and happens at a smaller financial scale. However, if the legislature is committed, which I hope it is, to attracting industries like iron and steel facilities, there is more Pennsylvania can do in addition to growing the available pot of funds for this program. At a recent hearing in front of the Clean Hydrogen Task Force at the Louisiana State House, Hyundai Steel shared three key reasons why it chose the state for a $6 billion investment in a clean iron and steel facility, in addition to the state's support and investment in clean electricity for the massive energy requirements of hydrogen. Along with clean electricity and hydrogen, Hyundai named workforce availability, educating the public about new technology, and of course, incentives as key reasons they chose Louisiana. I would urge the legislature to consider these wraparound programs that can bolster the economic incentives put forward in this bill. Project labor agreements and training programs, as well as a public education campaign, all backed by strong renewable energy policies and investments, can help grow investment in Pennsylvania's manufacturing sector. In conclusion, I wanted to share what a program like this means to me personally. I'm a Lehigh University alum, class of 2011. While I was in Bethlehem, I saw firsthand what remediation and transitioning former steel mills away from heavy industry looks like. I heard from my professors about what it was like I heard from my professors about what it was like to live next to a steel mill and next to an abandoned steel mill. Pennsylvanians deserve better. Clean iron and steelmaking can reverse the trend of Pennsylvania's declining industrial footprint. A report from the Ohio River Valley Institute on Transforming the Mon Valley Works found that a transition to green steel could support over 3,800 jobs, representing a 42.8% total increase in employment as compared to the roughly 1,800 jobs under the business-as-usual scenario and the current trajectory of conventional steelmaking employment, which is a decline in jobs of over 30% over the same time period. Thank you again Chairman Samuels and Chair Greiner and the members of the Finance Committee for considering my testimony. I urge this committee to support the bill and further strengthen it to ensure the greatest possible outcomes for jobs, health, climate, and Pennsylvania communities. And I'll join my fellow panel members in answering questions.
Thank you very much. Three things, please feel free to send us your testimony. I'll make sure all 26 committee members get it. Secondly, I am also a Lehigh University graduate. And thirdly, we have
I'm not.
And I've got a couple of questions, but I want to call on Representative Rossi first.
Hi. My question's regarding the concrete. So what I'm finding as a consumer, I feel I have the right to buy regular concrete that doesn't have recycled materials in it, and it's impossible to find because it seems like it's taking over. At the high cost of concrete and getting the contractors to put it in, they're all telling me it's garbage and they hate that they're being forced to use it. I just did a really big project and I wanted straight-up concrete, and I almost could find no one that would do it. So they really don't have longevity studies or things that show that it's not going to void. What can you tell me about that?
Well, first of all, I'm excited you're, I'm excited you're thinking about concrete. That's more than most people do. And first thing, I can, I can tell you with certainty that nobody's being required to use green concrete in Pennsylvania, or by and large if it's not a public project anywhere in the United States. So I think, I'm not sure what you're referring to there, but there's about, you know, many dozens of things that concrete producers can do that can be labeled as green, recycled, putting different materials in there, and recycled materials like glass pozlon is something that happens sometimes. Usually recycled materials are put in there because they, one, work really well, or they were a cost-saving measure, but it's all around a good thing. I've actually never heard anybody say, oh, I wish that my concrete didn't have X, Y, and Z in it. But two, this industry is actually incredibly rigid in changing. There's methods for, there's quasi-governmental or NGO agencies that, all the above, that work with standards that make sure that concrete is, you know, safe, does all the things that it's supposed to do. And actually, one of the biggest challenges in the industry in doing something innovative is that it's so incredibly hard to get through that process of updating standards. So it's, we're definitely not going all willy-nilly with changing what the concrete industry is doing. In fact, it's the opposite. It's really, really difficult. So yeah, I don't know. I'd love to continue that conversation, but I think it might be, there's a lot to unpack there.
Well, I think the costs are getting driven up on regular, straight-up concrete because they want you to go with the green, but I don't want the green. So I feel that it's not competitive.
I think if you dive into those facts, that's, that's not true. And there's definitely instances out there that
Can you provide me information that proves it's not true?
Yeah, sure. And I would, I love digging into these questions.
I would like a follow-up with that.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you, Representative Rossi. And I know we have, as I said, folks have a lot of different things all over the Capitol. So I wanted to have a couple of questions of my own. I know Representative Ingles has a couple of questions. First of all, I do want to give credit to Representative Ingles. Earlier this year, we passed in this committee and then in the House of Representatives, the Edge Program, several tax incentive for job creation. And the Edge Program itself, that had a reliable energy tax credit, it had a milk processing tax credit, clean hydrogen hubs tax credit, semiconductor manufacturing tax credit, and sustainable aviation fuel tax credit. We also added, in this committee, we added a geothermal energy tax credit. So that bill with six tax credits advanced through the Finance Committee, passed the House a bipartisan vote of 108 to 95. So when I looked at Representative Fiedler's legislation, to me, it fits quite nicely into that package of tax credits, the Edge Program. And so I wanted to give credit to Representative Ingles for bringing that forward earlier this year. I know the bill has, the bill in chief does talk about a tax credit of up to 30% of production costs, and I know we have the bill analysis right in front of you, 30% of qualified production costs, up to a maximum of a $10 million tax credit for a facility. The total annual cap as proposed in this bill is $50 million, and it would expire in about 10 years, 2035, similar to some of the other tax credits in the, in the Edge bill. In the bill, I know we have a lot of definitions on how this would work, and I know we, on page four, we decide, we define what is a qualified production cost, who can take the tax credit. We have a qualified taxpayer at the bottom of page four who operates a facility, which is back on page two, we define what is a facility and what are the advanced clean manufacturing project facilities. And then on page two and three, we talk about specifically what are those, what is clean energy, what, we have clean steel, clean aluminum, clean cement, clean glass, and we have definitions of each of the, of the processes that would qualify. I know we're going to be working on this bill for the next several weeks, and I appreciate the input we received today. I did want to start off by asking, I know we've lost recently some of the federal tax incentives through the omnibus bill that passed this summer. So the 2022 Infrastructure Act had significant investment in clean energy. What are some of the other states doing right now that would be similar to what Representative Fiedler is proposing for Pennsylvania?
I could probably speak to that. So, and again, this might be a little bit cement and concrete heavy, so sorry, no, nothing against all the other things.
We have a lot of concrete manufacturing in the Lehigh Valley.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah, I'm on the wrong side of the state to care about this. But so I'll just start with what was happening at the federal level, might be a good place to lean into that question. Between IRA and bill, there were quite a few clean manufacturing, or I would say low-carbon materials, programs that were relevant, and they're all kind of in various stages. There was the CPRG, Climate Pollution Reduction Grant Program, which was, some funding made it to some states, some was retracted. Like I said, that's where Pennsylvania got the RISE. Pennsylvania put in application for the RISE Program, which is an industrial decarbonization program, huge win for Pennsylvania, one of the biggest, if not the biggest, dollar values of that program. As for now, that's still happening, which basically means that's money for plant upgrades, for, you know, anything and everything, industrial decarbonization in the state. Other state, another very relevant thing that states are doing all over the country to promote this is actually more of a mandatory approach, not as popular in Pennsylvania, I don't think. But just to our south, for instance, Maryland has a buy-clean policy, which requires a certain level of, you know, steel, asphalt, concrete. How they, basically what they do is require, they set a threshold, GWP, which is a global warming potential. And what that does is measures how much carbon was associated with the production of that material. And the way that that law works is, as a state, state projects, they don't buy those materials if they're below that. And that's a lot, there's examples of that around the country. I think people think those are great as well, but it's definitely a stick and not a carrot. There's another program worth mentioning. I could talk about this a really long time, but I think I'll stop here. There's something called the Low Carbon Transportation Materials Program. This was something that was basically geared towards state DOTs to start using a lot of these materials, steel, concrete, and by default, cement, asphalt, and glass, and a few others. So basically, the way that program worked, it said, state DOT, we're going to give you a certain amount of money to start requiring these materials, you do it the way that you want to do it. Everybody was super excited by this program. Penn Dot applied for that money and got it, and then got it retracted. But there are five states that are still, got that money early enough to still get it, and they're doing super exciting things. Colorado is one of them. Kentucky, interestingly enough, is one of them. So they're all over the spectrum in terms of the political spectrum, but they are going through measuring the material, requiring an environmental product declaration, setting up qualified vendors. So this is happening, for sure, in that capacity. Did that answer your question? Yeah, there's probably lots more. There's a whole spectrum of policies out here to encourage clean manufacturing.
My, my next question, and then I'll go to Representative Ingles and Representative Kephart. So the bill allows a tax credit of up to 30% of qualified production costs. If a facility would have $33.3 million of the qualified production cost, they could get that maximum credit of $10 million. What is the magnitude, the size of many of these facilities that you're talking about around the country and in Pennsylvania? And I guess we're talking about both brand-new facilities we'd attract to Pennsylvania, but also some of the facilities we already have here.
Right. I hog the cement discussion for a second, and I think there's a different answer to that for every industry. So you might be more equipped to steel, I'm guessing. So for cement, there's about a half a dozen very large facilities, mostly in the Lehigh Valley. There's one over on the other side of the state. These are, you know, super-high emitting facilities that when you start talking about tinkering with what they do, it costs many millions, if not billions of dollars, to fundamentally change those things. But I do think it's important to note, for cement particularly, there's a lot of different ways to start working on your emissions reductions that aren't nearly that intensive as maybe would be comparable to a conversion of a steel mill, because there's so many different ways to do cement slightly better with tinkering with the chemistry and the additives. So that's, that's the answer for that. I'll yield to the other materials.
Well, I would actually say, if any specific steel questions, I think Ms. Lewis may have a few specific numbers. But I think, maybe to take a step back, this bill is, as proposed, is offering to do a lot of different things. There is, I think, a straight-up economic development element to producing clean tech manufacturing. And so your grid mod equipment, the heat pumps, the equipment that we expect and that has been shown to have growth sectors and for which also Pennsylvania already has an available workforce, that does not, we did not see that that had like specific clean production requirements, but rather that is a credit to produce clean tech, which could then be installed in other, in other facilities. So more of like a second degree of producing clean, clean manufacturing. And so there's a lot you could do with those. And just as an example, and I can follow up with additional examples, but Prismen, which is located in Pennsylvania, did, was able to use 3.8 million in federal
Which one?
Prismen, Prismian.
Okay.
Was able to utilize 3.8 million in federal funds to double its production capacity, investing $22.5 million of its own funds, just as one particular example. So that is, that is an example on the smaller side, as opposed to, say, like in Edgar Town where you might be looking at 500 million, and they're not going to play in this market because the scale is too large.
And just quickly to Hillary Lewis, if, on the size and scope of some of these facilities?
Yeah, so what's considered like an industrial-scale steel plant produces about 2 million metric tons of steel per year at about a cost of $500 per ton, so that's a billion dollars a year. So that's, I think, gives a little color to our comments about how the program isn't exactly right-sized for the scale of some of these really major investments, but it can be paired with other things or grown to address some of those additional costs.
Thank you.
Could I add something real quick?
Sure.
I think it applies to all these, but I think it's so important to highlight the RISE Program right now is such an exciting opportunity for Pennsylvania in a ton of money flowing to all these industries to do plant upgrades. But what they really need is, step one, they pay for the really expensive thing to make, to do what they do better, but then they need to get rewarded for doing that thing better, or else it was just like all completely for naught. And they inevitably use some of their own money as well. So, you know, the right sizing discussion is important, but I wanted to just mention that there's other things happening that this fits in really, really well.
But if I may add to that, I think a distinction between the RISE PA Program, and I will say we are also very excited about the RISE PA Program. It is a different kind of incentive because the RISE PA Program is designed to incent cleaning up incumbent facilities' processes, whereas this bill could do that on a smaller scale, or it could incent new innovations and new market entrants. So, so they work in adjacent measure, and you could potentially like stack them together, but they, they do ultimately serve like different opportunities.
Thank you. I'll go to Representative Ingles.
Thank you, Chair. Looking at House Bill 1556, one thing that certainly sticks out to me first is what was based on a lot of the testimony of Ms. Lewis. I represent the Mon Valley, and so you were speaking towards, you know, something very personal, very local to me. So I'm happy to see clean steel included in this bill, especially because of the recent acquisition of U.S. Steel by Nippon. I know Nippon's plans for the future already include producing clean steel and taking advantage of a lot of those processes. So I'm happy to see that. In addition, Mr. Ash, what you were speaking on, the industries themselves are already coming in with these plans. And so I think it's valuable to be supporting these corporations, these companies, these different entities with, you know, the support through tax credits like this to help them see through and especially the job creation aspect of it. The other thing that sticks out to me is, in general, the energy needs of tomorrow. We know that our Commonwealth is facing an energy crisis in the next few years, and what better way to be preparing for that energy price crisis than, than manufacturing some of the very products and taking, utilizing these processes that have that ultimate goal of grid stability in the future with that in mind. So I'd like to thank the prime sponsor for inviting to be, inviting me to be a co-prime sponsor on the bill, and I look forward to seeing this bill advancing. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Ingles, and Representative Kephart.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I want to thank you for hosting this hearing. You're always very good about having hearings, and so is the chairwoman. Elsa has this bill in her respective committee, so I do appreciate that of both of you. Mr. Ash, I must tell you, I'm a little jaded. I'm a Penn State grad, and Jamie Colburn was my environmental law professor, who I had many times. So I, I'm jaded in that way since you're from Pitt, you know. Anyhow, so
And I went to WVU, if that makes sense.
Yeah. Yeah. So anyhow, I don't know if you know Professor Colburn, but a good guy.
Yeah.
So anyhow, under the bill here, I got, I saw this letter from Hitachi, but I noticed it was some tailoring to it. I thought it was interesting, though, that they were supporting the bill, but I see it's a little bit more closer to this particular division of Hitachi, because I will tell you that I used to drive their rock trucks in the coal mining industry, and I would be amazed that the Hitachi organization overall would be supportive of the whole green energy tax credit programs, just because half of their business is in mining. Anyhow, but Mr. Ash, you said something earlier about, you know, industrial policy and propping these things up and all that. I mean, that sounds a little bit like central planning to me. I would, I just want to bring some, some former companies to light here, what happens when you centrally plan so much. Solyndra, Sunova Energy, Sun Power, all received government funding help or in some form and went bankrupt, all of them. There's a lot more on there, I just took a few. I don't think the government should be picking winners and losers. Let the free market go. If BlackRock wants If BlackRock wants to invest in these groups, great. If it was a private money, though, BlackRock has lots of money that they can go and lose on their own. They have billions of dollars. I have nothing against Larry Fink. I think he's a very smart guy. I mean, he's obviously a lot smarter than I am, or I wouldn't be sitting here. So I just think that private equity firms like that can invest their own money. Again, I have nothing against private equity. I think it's, you know, they do a lot of good in different ways, but I just think that, I don't understand why we are continuing to push certain industries like this at the expense of, you know, others. If, you know, this bill isn't necessarily about this, but we just did these edge tax credits last year, it would be part of it. You know, in the coal mining business, we just want the government out of our lives, and if we did, and we didn't have to pay a special tax and all that, we would be producing more coal in my air than we ever had before, and we still produce a good amount. We produce steel and all that with our coal, it's a very good met coal. I'm from Clearfield in Cambria County, so, and I live real close to center. We're sort of like a very good BTU, bituminous area. But anyhow, I just, I'm confused, why do you support, I mean, what you were describing was central planning to the T of, you know, we got to pick these industries and prop them up. I believe, you know, I forget your exact terminology, but why do you think that that is necessary? If we just let the free market go and let these big capital groups invest, I think the market will figure it out. It always has. America has always been letting the free market go. I know I sound like Ronald Reagan, he's one of my favorite presidents, but anyhow, it's, you know, I just don't understand. The market will figure it out. What consumers demand, they will figure it out. They will meet the consumer needs. They don't need, you know, carve-outs and everything else.
Yeah, sure. I could talk about this all day, so, but, because I think they're interesting. So I have two points to that, or I guess three. The first one's really quick, is that I would, I would push back on saying that this is central planning. If you do an incentive program that incrementally incentivizes good behavior, it's super open-ended, and you could, like, and with cement, there's probably a dozen different ways to do this. You're not by any means picking winners and losers, you're just trying to nudge the flock in a different direction. But I, the second point I'll make is, I think that there's a big, maybe lapse of memory in this country for how we used to do industrial policy, and if you look at how we developed into a thriving, you know, automobile industry, fracking, the internet, I could go on a really long time, but the most complicated things that we are kind of pillar gems of our economy were incredibly incentivized upfront by government intervention, and it's something that was incredibly bipartisan before I was born, and it's something that, you know, should make Americans really proud to build that economy as policymakers together in a sort of a nonpartisan way, but these things don't happen by accident. And if you just, so I just, there is kind of this myth that the free market just has a, the market is a garden, and if you never go out and garden the garden, it dies. So I think free market ideology is a bit confused sometimes. And then the third point I'll say here, if you really want to talk about market stuff, this might go way over people's heads, but if you, if it's like an economic point, but disincentivizing negative externalities and incentivizing positive externalities are both really important parts of free markets. And what I mean by that is, you can't ignore, when a business is doing something that harms, creates a harm, they need to account for that in their cost production, and if they're doing something good, ideally, they should be rewarded for that, and that should go into their production function. So economists think about this all the time, very, very conservative economists, to be honest, will say that's just part of economic policy, and that's really what we're doing here, is we're incentivizing a positive externality in purely economic terms. So that's the, hopefully that resonated with you, I don't know.
But, I mean, who, so, yeah, oh, is this one? Yeah, that's one. So, I mean, if you're teaching environmental law, right, you probably had them teach, you know, taught them Ronald Coase or something, right, you know, you know, or Friedman, it doesn't matter which one. Sure, there's negative externalities, but, so the government and their infinite wisdom of bureaucrats and legislators is now determining which is a positive and negative externality in society.
Yeah, I think there's for sure wise limitations to being too prescriptive with that, but at least in this scenario, it's pretty clear that there's, there's not a high-level prescription in telling these entities what to do. They're just, and it's also, like, there's not a lot of, yeah, there's a risk there in really saying, industries, you need to do X, Y, and Z, but I think this is definitely not that. So I hear that concern, but giving a slight nudge to incentivizing industry to do things that arguably put them on the global stage for what they need to be doing to succeed in a future where, regardless of what the U.S. is doing or what Pennsylvania is doing, we are going to be in an economy that measures the environmental good or lack thereof of your product. Like, the states all around us do this already, our global partners across the Atlantic do this already. Like, whether we like it or not, it's part of the future, and I think it's just wise to help our industry players here make that happen in a way that works for them, in a very non-formular, non-prescriptive way.
I would just say, I think it depends who you ask on that. I think on November of 2024, a majority of the country rejected that notion that, you know, the infinite wisdom of what's good and bad, and if you're mentioning the neighboring states, I don't want to be New York. I just saw a thing on Post the other day, this is my last point, Mr. Chairman, I promise. I just saw, it was projecting the 2030 redistricting cycle. The states that were growing the most, Florida and Texas. The states that were going to lose, California, New York, Illinois, Rhode Island, we're all going to lose people. All the gaining ones were all conservative-led states, and the biggest being Texas and Florida. Just saying, people are voting with their feet, and also what happened last November.
Thank you, Representative Kephart. We also have a response from Hillary Lewis online.
Thanks, yeah. I just wanted to chime in without, you know, refuting anything that you had said, but just add some additional context. One of the reasons why Pennsylvania historically has been such a hub for coal-based steelmaking is because of its location, you know, between the iron ore reserves in Minnesota and coal, which sounds like comes from maybe your community, and so those kind of met in the middle around Pittsburgh. But new, modern, and clean facilities have different ingredients, and so they will look to locate in different places. So market forces alone are actually already telling us where the new and modern iron and steel facilities will likely be located, and that is places like Louisiana and Texas, where you've already seen two facilities built and a third on the horizon. And so one of the reasons why this legislation is so important for Pennsylvania is to keep that competitive edge. Pennsylvania has a really strong workforce, and it has many other advantages, but to be honest, in order to keep the iron and steel industry in Pennsylvania, the Commonwealth will need to offer more incentives to kind of combat the market forces that are pushing the industry away. So I think that's something else to consider, that this is not, you know, necessarily about government handouts, this is about keeping Pennsylvania competitive in the iron and steel industry and retaining a really important local industry. Thank you.
Thank you. And I do want to give an opportunity to Representative Fiedler for a closing comment. I do appreciate this legislation, how it builds on our industrial heritage, steel, aluminum, cement, and talking about the future, talking about clean manufacturing, as several of our testifiers have said, other states are doing it, other countries are doing it, and we are, Pennsylvania, with our heritage, should be at the center of clean manufacturing. Representative Fiedler?
Thank you, Chair Samuelson. Thank you to the committee for taking the time, and thank you so much to today's testifiers. I do think that Pennsylvania has an incredible opportunity to be a leader in this industry, and as we've all heard about our Commonwealth's history, I think we are really well-posed to be a leader on clean manufacturing going forward. As you've heard, many states, including states like Texas, Kentucky, are taking advantage, are interested in growing this industry in their state. And so I don't think that this is a, this isn't a particularly partisan issue, this isn't, this is an issue about trying to grow industry and grow the economy in our states. I think Pennsylvania can do this, and I did just want to say that if any of my colleagues on either side of the aisle are interested in working on changes, we are definitely open to modifications to this legislation, including something that could be like a clawback provision if a business is not able to fulfill expectations. You know, I think we all want this to be a wise investment of taxpayer dollars, and I think that we can make that happen if we get the legislation right. So thank you again so much to the committee for having me, and I look forward to working with you on this legislation going forward.
And thank you, Representative Fiedler, for bringing this forward. We will be working on this for the next several weeks, many opportunities for input. We will have that meeting on October 28th, where I intend to bring up the teacher tax credit, and I thank everyone for attending today. This meeting's adjourned.